All rise, ready to schedule the important sessions tonight. Chairman, please keep all those who have a cell phone and turn it off for local outrage. Please remain standing for a word of prayer and our pledge to the flag.
I would like to call Anthony Campbell up to the podium to lead us in our invocation tonight. Anthony is the pastor of Freedom Life Church.
Appreciate having me out tonight, and I appreciate everything that you guys do for us. And I do want to know before I pray that we have prayer meetings on a regular basis, and you guys, ladies, are getting prayed for on a regular basis. We're praying for you. Let us bound pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful to you, Lord, for who you are, your goodness to us, your grace, your mercy, your faithfulness. And God, we thank you for all your blessings. We thank you that you've allowed us to live in this wonderful county. And Lord, we just pray you continue blessing on this county. I thank you for the commissioners here, Lord, and pray, God, you bless them. I pray you continue to give them wisdom, guidance, direction, and everything they do, Lord. God, we do pray for your presence here tonight. Lord, we pray, God, that your will would be done here tonight. We pray for wisdom, that wisdom would be imparted here to the leaders tonight, Lord. God, that you would direct them in their thoughts. And Lord, I pray for unity. And Lord, that you would just have your way, that your blessing would flow in this county, and let it start in the leaders. And God, we thank you so much for this, and ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you will remain standing, I have a guest tonight that will be leading our pledge. Staff Sergeant John Brantley will come up to the podium, please. And I have a presentation for John after he leads us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope that you can hear me, because I'm pretty simple that on my. I wanted to start with something different with our pledge, and each month we're going to have a different person. That would be a servant of country, a servant of county, capacity. And I would start it out with one of my neighbors here, John. He actually did it during Iraq, and he had to go through the Chinese law, the way that actually retired from you when you were serving in the National Guard. Thank you, John.
All right. Before I call the meeting to order, I have just a few words to say. Using Executive Haley's email as a basis, let's work together to make this the most productive year of the county commission. I had hoped to extend my hand to him tonight, but he had another obligation. But I can guarantee you that we're going to work together, and all 24 of us, and with Executive Haley, we're going to continue to improve Warren County, and that is our goal. Some of the things that will change will obviously be possibly some of the flow of the meetings. I hope that we have a smooth meeting. I hope that each commissioner takes their job seriously, comes prepared, and treats each other with respect. I plan on working hard to be the best chairman possible for all of you, whether you supported me or not. One thing I wanted to make clear, after this month that we went through, I know there has been some tensions between some of us. There's been some things said that probably was hurtful to several of us, including me. I have not violated any sunshine law, had any secret meetings. Most of us here tonight work and have families, and there's very little time for extracurricular activities, other than what we do here on the commission. But I will try to do a better job of not using the word "we." I'm used to using the word "we" because everything that I do, I look at it as a team, whether it's the Health and Welfare Committee, whether it's this commission, whether it's something at work. That's a phrase you'll hear me say a lot. I don't like to use "I" a whole lot. So I will try to improve on that in the future. And also, if you need anything at all, feel free to call me and ask me, and I'll do my best to help you in any way possible. Finally, this isn't my first rodeo. I've been a commissioner for several years, and several different terms under three different county executives. I'm used to being talked about at times. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. Most of the time, it seems to be good. But either way, I want to do the best job I can, not just because of me being a commissioner and representing the 4th District, but ever since I became a Christian in 1990, I decided to try to set a good example for my wife and my family, for my church, for my mom and dad, for my brother, for all the people that I know, all my friends, and I want to be a good example to all of you. So I make mistakes. Let me know. I'll correct them, and we'll go forward. With that, I would like to call this meeting to order. Call the roll, please.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Richard Grissom.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Lori Jenkins.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Joseph Stotts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Twenty-three present.
Twenty-three present. Next, I would entertain a motion to adopt the docket.
A motion to adopt the docket.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lori Jenkins.
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hilton.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the docket, and this is a resolution rescinding the term limits of the Industrial Development Board. I would like that to be item 7A on the docket, and 7 would turn into 7B.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to add a rescension, a resolution for term limits on IDB as 7A. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Stout. All in favor? We had someone raise their hand. Commissioner Hennessy?
I'd like to discuss, have a discussion on this particular motion, on this resolution. I'd like to call Mr. Charles Curtis up to the podium, please, and to explain to us what the Tennessee Code says about the Industrial Board, and specific about term limits. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Curtis.
Like, Mr. Chairman, really, the Tennessee Code says nothing about term limits. I think maybe what I said to one person or two people maybe got a little bit misconstrued. But the county commission, before you got elected, before this commission was seated, whenever who, every which commission decided they were going to put term limits on all the boards and commissions, they could do that for themselves. But it's not binding on you. It doesn't extend past an election. There's only one thing that this body can do that's going to extend past the next election, and the other bunch can't ignore it. And that's create debt. If you create debt, they can't pretend it ain't there. It's still got to be paid. But you, right now, tonight, if the majority of you, if 13 of you decide you want to, you're not going to elect anybody longer than 12 years, you can, you can perfect that. But it is not going to carry over. Just like you're going to repeal this, what happened in 13, is that right?
Hmm.
Of course, you need to ask your county attorney, but I'm of the opinion, and I ain't an attorney, I'm about as far away from being one as you can be. But it's not in effect. It doesn't affect you. It can't go beyond the election. But now, y'all, if you decide you want them, you got the ability to adopt it, but it only impacts you during this term of office, this four years. You only got a little under three now. But it really doesn't say anything about term limits. You just don't have the authority to impact the next legislative body.
Okay.
Anybody have a question? Yes, sir.
Are you saying that we're not, we don't have any term limits? Only then that when the election, so we don't have term limits right now?
That's my opinion, but I'd consult my county attorney, because they don't, you don't have the legislative, you're called a legislative body, but you can't create laws. And so, the previous group that did that, it was fine during their term of office, but when they, when that election occurred, that was null and void. It don't extend to you. If you want to adopt it and go for the rest of this term, you got the ability to do that. But it's not going to impact the next legislative body. But it's not going to hurt you to repeal it if that's what you feel like doing. But I would consult my county attorney. I'm seriously heart attacked about that, because I'm not an attorney. But I talked to four or five this week about it.
Thank you. Mr. Bratcher, do you have any comments on that?
Respectfully to Mr. Curtis, I would disagree. I think that the resolutions that are passed by the county legislative body are in effect until they're removed. Now, you have the authority to remove them, just like the last one had the authority to put them in. But if we're in a situation where every resolution that's passed is automatically null and void every time a new commission comes in, then we're in a situation where you have to, at the beginning of the council body, start a whole list of everything that's going to go back into effect. It is correct that some are absolutely binding under no circumstances, can be changed, like debt issuances. But I would respectfully say that I believe that the term limits are in place, but you have absolute authority to reject them and take them away if you choose to do that, regardless of what the last commission did put in.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Bratcher, we're referencing a resolution in 2013.
Correct.
Do you know why that resolution was put in place, and how many people voted for it, and what the results was? Would you miss Scott?
I had to make copy of it this morning for Lauren or whatever, but Kristy's raising her hand. Commissioner Ross?
Commissioner Ross?
I actually had Ms. Hennessy, excuse me, make a, send me a copy of that, and it was a unanimous vote to support the term limits. The, I think Mr. Prater was the only one that wasn't here that night, so there was one absent. But every other commissioner was a full yes, and I can share that or email that with anybody that would like a copy of it.
Does it state in that resolution why they put term limits?
I remember.
Mr. Bratcher, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill is the one brought that up, okay, back in 2013.
To rescind this resolution, does, I know what the question was, to rescind this resolution, how many votes does it have to receive?
Thirteen.
Mr. Lee was actually a part of that commission that voted for it, as were you, Mr. Wiltshire, and you voted in favor of term limits. So if either of y'all would like to speak to that, because you were here, you might know more about it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lee.
I don't know. We had a lot of input from the community that a lot of our commissions was the same people over and over and over again. And a lot of people had an interest of trying to bring new blood in, new thoughts. And of course, I voted for it, but I turned around, and we had a problem finding people to serve on our airport commission, because there's only a handful of people in our community that fly airplanes. And we always wanted to have people that were knowledgeable of avionics to be on those committees, so we run into a problem. And I think we exempted our airport boards from this. You know, I don't know. It's either dainty if you do and dainty if you don't. It's either way. But if we're, if, I don't know, I understand both positions, the Mr. Bratcher's and, but I just don't know what we need to do.
I think we just need to vote. Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Ruble, would you like to share why you want to do away with term limits?
Commissioner Ruble?
Yes. Well, for one thing, we, and I spoke with, with Mr. Curtis, and his opinion was that we did need to take the opinion of the Industrial Development Board as to who was the most influential and the most beneficial for the board. And finding that one person whose term was about to expire was unanimously the most important member of the board, according to them, then I was contacted by IDB members. I didn't take this upon myself. The only reason that I, that I pursued it is because I was asked to. And once, once we took it up, we, some of the questions from the IDB board was, why do we not have consistency since the airport had dropped their restrictions and their limitations? So why are we being, being restricted to two-year terms? And another thing that, that we have realized is that, and Robert, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in 2013, this, this rule was imposed. Mr. Golden had served a term, or relatively, an entire term, before that rule was enforced. Seeing that it was prior to the enforcement, my understanding, if I'm, if I'm correcting the law, and you're a lawyer, I'm not, but technically, he has only served one term since the law was put in place after the fact that he had served one term. And you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yes. And in fact, the original resolution that enacted the term limits included language saying that any prior service is not going to be counted for that specific resolution. So essentially, if anybody was serving at the time, they're considered to be in their first term at that time. Now, I don't know the exact date that that resolution was passed, and the exact date that Mr. Golden was put back on. So, you know, we might need to do some math to be accurate there. But it does say in the resolution that anyone serving at the time of the passage of the resolution is considered to be in their first term, regardless of how long they've been on up until that point.
Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll try a voice, voice vote first. I know we'll probably do a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Michael Bell.
Mr. Wiltshire.
Yes, we're voting for limiting the?
No, this is voting to amend the docket, to add, add the vote to rescind IDB term limits. This is voting on the amendment.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
No.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
No.
Steve Glenn.
No.
Richard Grissom.
No.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
No.
Lori Jenkins.
No.
Ron Lee.
No.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
No.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
No.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Is anyone want to change their vote?
Motion passes. Fourteen yes, nine no. If, with your permission, Commissioner Ruble, we will put that at 7A and make 7, 7B.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to amend the docket a little bit, please. I'd like to add that the resolution's on your desk, Sheriff, for renaming a bridge in the name of Thomas D. Young. And I'd like to add that after the reading of the notaries, please. I believe that'll be number 11, if that's okay with you, sir.
We have a motion to amend the docket to add the highway dedication, the bridge dedication. We have a second from Commissioner Hennessy. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we will put that at number 11.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I have three more budget amendments that Justin brought to my attention today that need to be added to the docket. The first one is DFS-FY 1920-1, and I would like this to be 5A. This is an amendment to put money in place to pay principal on the ESG projects, and this passed Financial Management 5 to 0.
We have a motion to amend the docket with a budget transfer for ESG. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Stout. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I also have, this is the Third Amendment, and this is, I'd like it to be 5B, and this is GF-FY 1920-2, and this is the amendment to allow animal control to buy the van and do some upgrades at the control center, and I so move.
We have a second from Commissioner Hennessy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, one more budget amendment. This is GF-FY 1920-3, and I would like this to be item 5C, and that would change item 5 to 5D, to clarify. And this is a, you've got the, the note on your desk, it says a $15,000 grant. That's actually a mistake, and Director Cotton will talk to that, to that point a little later, but it's actually $20,000 worth of grant money, and I so move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second from Commissioner Savage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there's no other amendments, I would, I would like to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the, sorry, someone else. I'd like to amend the docket that would establish 8A for commission confirmation of previously hired animal control and sanitation department directors, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second to add as 8A confirmation of the sanitation director and the animal control and adoption center director. And we, we can, I'll actually be putting that in form, I mean, making that motion myself, but I will explain further as I come off the bench. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman? For clarification, does that move 8 to 8B?
Yes. Yes, that will make 8, 8B. And everyone make sure that you have all of these resolutions on your table. I know there's a lot being added tonight. We'll try to do the best we can. If I don't restate the motion when we go through it, just ask me, you know, to restate it. All right. Now, we have made these motions to amend the docket. Now, we need to vote on the amended docket. We have a motion by Commissioner Hennessy to accept the docket as amended.
Mr. Chairman, one question. The sanitation director, were we going to vote on confirmation of that tonight also?
Hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Second by Commissioner Hilton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm unaware if we have anyone that is going to make a public comment. I don't have anything on my docket, so I'm assuming we don't. So I will go into special recognition.
Mr. Chairman, you missed the minutes.
Reading the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need, I would entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to suspense the reading of the minutes, except to mess present.
Okay, I have a motion to suspense of the reading of the minutes.
Second.
And approve them as written. Second by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. I've got some special recognition, and this is, I'm doing this on behalf of Executive Haley, so please forgive me if I mess up on this. He's got notes. He writes pretty well. But I'm going to make these presentations and on behalf of Executive Haley. The first one is for Jean Hobbs, and he has wrote here, Jean has been our archivist since the establishment of that department. She is also chair of the Public Records Commission. Many thanks for the countless hours of cataloging, archiving of our county documents. Not a paid position, so a true volunteer in the spirit of Tennessee. So I want to present this to Jean Hobbs on behalf of Executive Haley. Is Jean here?
She's here.
Okay. I'm going to let Lisa present this. All right. The next one is for Phyllis Nalan, and it, it says, Phyllis has worked for 33 years for the county, serving as deputy clerk. She's a loyal employee who has been the utmost professional in all her duties. The public loves her. And he says Lisa can fill us in on the info.
She might not want me to.
Come on up.
How about you present this?
I'm going to, I'm going to let Lisa present this.
You want it the other way?
Yeah, turn it around there. All right, the next presentation is to Jeff Golden, and I don't believe Jeff is here either. So I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll let Executive Haley give that to Jeff at a later date. Whereas Jeffrey Golden is a Warren County, Tennessee native who has dedicated his career to building a thriving business community while improving the quality of life for our residents. And whereas this outstanding citizen is a retired banker, who throughout his many years of private and public service, has played a vital role in promoting economic growth and prosperity across Warren County and the region. And whereas Mr. Golden has ably served on our Industrial Development Board and has contributed to many workforce initiatives and business recruitment opportunities during his tenure as a board member. And whereas over the years, this successful businessman has tirelessly endeavored to put community above self, and has been honored by many organizations for his many philanthropic efforts. And now therefore, I, Jimmy Haley, Warren County Executive, join all the members of the Warren County Commission, as we recognize the many contributions of Jeff Golden. Thank him for his leadership, and wish him well on his retirement from the McMemel Warren County Industrial Board. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and affix this seal on October 21st, 2019, County Executive Jimmy Haley. So we will have that presented to Jeff. Next, we'll move into elected officials and department reports, and I have a report to read from County Executive Jimmy Haley. The last month has been busy, with continued progress being made across each department. I am proud, proud of our success and your leadership in moving projects forward. ESG is installing lights in our county buildings, with HVAC and roofing schedules and timelines being finalized. Several units are down, and we are working to get those replaced before the cold weather hits. ESG teams are here daily, preparing the next step in the jail renovations and upgrades. ADA plans on moving, are moving forward. Signage and facility modifications are underway. My team is working diligently to complete work before December. As you know, our T-DOT funding for the Highway Department is tied to ADA compliance and the implementation of a corrective plan of action. Barrett Group is still conducting the performance audit of county finances, and we are negotiating a similar agreement with another firm to examine utility and service billing. I continue to explore every option on increasing revenues through cost-saving measures. Since the record February floods, my office has been working with all our departments to complete the proper permits and paperwork to obtain FEMA, NRCS, and TEMA fund for, funding for damage repairs. Two categories are approved, but deadlines are nearing. We are awaiting TDEC permits to proceed. The Highway Department will now be doing much of the mitigation work at Hills Creek in order to speed up the process. Compliance with federal agencies and their regulations is detailed, time-consuming, and requires specific documentation. During the next two weeks, I will be out of the office attending state events. I have been asked to present at the Governor's Economic and Community Development Conference in Nashville, and then will be in Knoxville, participating in the TCSA annual meeting. Please direct any questions to my executive assistant, Lauren Hennessy, while I am out of town. Thanks for your service to the residents of Warren County. Together we change lives. Together we change lives, one day at a time, across our community. Sincerely, County Executive Jimmy Haley, and we appreciate all his work. Next is the Finance Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
We have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Owens, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Next is the Animal Control and Adoption Center. I don't see Sherri here, but I can give you an update. As chairman of that committee, we are, we've just basically added to our docket to vote in short, you know, a few minutes on purchasing a van for transport, and also new kennels for the facility there. And I think right now that we are at capacity. I noticed that she had taken in a few more dogs, and so we're at capacity, and you may be getting some calls. It makes it hard for us to be able to go out and pick up animals when we're already Would someone like to make a motion to accept my report? Motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Hilton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? County Welfare, that happens to be me, and I don't have anything to report on that at this time. I have a motion from Commissioner Taylor to accept it, my report, and a second by Commissioner Glenn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the Health Department, and we have Caitlin here.
Good evening, my name is Caitlin Patterson. I'm the health educator for the Warren County Health Department. I'm here on behalf of my county director, Andrea Fox. Her reports were sent to you guys electronically. Does anyone have any question regarding those reports?
We have a motion by Commissioner Bell, second by Commissioner Stott, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Caitlin. Next is the Industrial Development Board, and I don't see anybody here representing them. You have the packet.
Moved to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Dunlap, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next is the Planning Commission Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's any questions on the Planning Commission Quarterly Report, myself or Steve Glenn can try to answer it. If we can't answer it, we'll find an answer. Thank you.
We have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Hilton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we'll go into committee reports, and we'll start off with Budget and Finance with Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have much to report. We did elect Vice Chair, Commissioner Randy England, and Secretary Tommy Savage, who's doing a fine job, and most of the action we took in Budget and Finance last week will be on the docket tonight, and that's all I've got to report. Thank you.
Next is Building the Grounds, and someone will have to speak for Carly. And I meant to mention that Carly is, is sick tonight, and I talked to him earlier today, and he wanted to let everybody know he was gonna try to be here, but he just, if he wasn't, he was very ill.
I'd like to speak to that, if I would, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Hennessy.
Building the Grounds has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Economic and Agricultural, Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and Agricultural Committee does not have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
Education, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, well, first I want to say, Mr. Cox is, is excitingly not here tonight because he is the host to, at the school for the Reagan banquet and dinner tonight for the Republican Party, and our governor is in attendance, and will be, has gone to take a tour of our school, and so Mr. Haley is there, and some other members that are absent here this evening. But he did report the ESG project continues to show us savings, and will actually be using some of that money to make some payments with already. The Bubba Ray School received their occupancy certificate, so they have moved in, and you can drive by that school and see a lot of progress there, and see people through the windows, and they're really excited about that. And it will not be too long before we'll have an open house, so you can come and tour the school. West Elementary School looks like a mess on the outside, with so much progress being made, but, and I know you might have read in the newspaper about the temporary road with, road being put in for the buses, and that is working, and they expect about two more weeks that that will be, project will be, where they, they will be able to put the road back and go back to their original traffic flow. There are several items on the agenda tonight, addressing the school budget and purchases that they have and contracts, and our next meeting has been changed due to conferences that Mr. Cox has attended, and so it's gonna be on Tuesday, November the 12th, at 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Financial Management.
Financial Management's been quite busy this week, this month. A lot of the early items on the agenda tonight are, passed through recently, in the last week or two, but other than that, financial management has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Justin. Health and Welfare, I've already updated you, so we have nothing to report at this time. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been approved, got our money and everything, for Turnip End Road, so I think Levy's gonna do it himself. We gotta lease some bigger equipment, so I think you're gonna start on that sometime next month, aren't you, Levy?
All the way along with Gobber.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last legislative committee, we addressed several more of the rules and regulations. We have about six more to go, and it's on our schedule for the next time to, to try to finish those up, and it's gonna be on Tuesday, November the 12th, at 6:00, on Tuesday, November the 12th. Veterans Day is the 11th, so that we, we have moved it over for that, so if anyone would like to join us, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and Personnel met on October 10th. We elected as Vice Chairman Steve Glenn and the Secretary Stephen Hilton, and we got our minutes, and they look really good. Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next is Safety, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This last month, we've had a little setback in one of our ambulances, we had an engine failure. We're proceeding to try to get that to a carry of, so tonight, I really appreciate our county commissioners getting back behind new business number six, to help us get us a new ambulance on the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. County Corrections Partnership, Commissioner Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As of right now, ESG still hasn't done anything over at the jail. There's a number of specialized equipment that's been purchased, and waiting on that to arrive, to get that started. We did discuss the council position again this month, and the sheriff has assured me that we're gonna make some ground on that here in the coming month. There were some legality questions that he was trying to get answered. Of course, we're working in some new territory here. We're wanting to model it after what generations has done for us, and the volunteering that they've been at our facility, and we want to try to just extend that on further, because that seems to be working, but we are trying to figure out the legality of things and creating this new position within this organization. Right now, we have eight positions open in the guards, so if anybody's interested in becoming a guard at the Warren County Jail, there are some positions available, and we want to get those positions filled as much, as quick as possible. We elected a Vice Chair, Joseph Stott, and our Secretary, Mr. Glenn here, is serving as our secretary. Our next meeting potentially is gonna be November the 7th, at 6:30, and we're hoping to have ESG to come in, actually give a full report of where they're at, and, and give us some updates there, and potentially, we're gonna invite Bob Bass in as well, to just get everybody updated all at one time, so appreciate that. Population currently is 257, 206 of those are male, 51 female.
Thank you. And last committee is redistricting, Commissioner Nalan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last, last month, we started this committee here, the redistricting committee, and I spoke with Ms. Suzie Davenport, with the election commission, and she asked that, that herself and Chuck Haston be put on this committee as well, so I hope by next month, we can vote that in, and also, I'm gonna request that Executive Haley be on there as well. She would like us to get together sometime in December for a first meeting, and then we will get started after the census. We'll start coming in about this time next year, and we'll be working on that, but we want to get that underway, and hopefully, that'll be on the docket in November to vote them three on this committee. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any old or unfinished business, so we will go into new business now. The first item is Resolution Number 29-219, or 2019, which is the 2018 International Building Codes. And you should have all of that information. I know we have Mr. Thompson here with us tonight, if we need to ask him anything. We have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Ruble. We have a second from Commissioner Savage.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to that motion.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Hilton.
So, obviously, it's been, it's been brought to my attention that we have a number of Amish people that's moved into our district, and we have over 100 families that have been moved in, and I'd actually ask the codes guy if he could come to the podium, because I do want to ask this question. They're concerned with these codes affecting them and the way that they build their structures, and the way that they've moved into our community, and, and so the number one question I do have is, with these codes, are they allowed to use sawmill lumber with, with their structures?
They can use sawmill lumber, but it has to be certified, and I did actually find them. My first introduction to Amish building was two months after I took this position, and they do do things completely different than the norm. So I did my research, found a little town called Morristown, New York, that had been, just settled a, I think it was 11-year lawsuit, they had with the Amish, based over the building codes. I talked to the building official up there, they were nice enough to send me, they actually had an engineer draw house plans and a school building plan to the building code for the Amish up there in order to end this dispute. They were nice enough to send me those plans, I made copies for that, of those, and I brought them to the Amish, so they have both copies of the school building and the house plans. These were all done to, to their style of building, using their materials. In upstate New York, they allowed the sawmills to provide a statement of meeting the Class II requirements of graded lumber. The codebooks currently are written based all on graded lumber, so that's where the issue came in, as far as the sawmill lumber is, because it's not, you know, it's not been inspected, it's not, you know, processed as graded lumber is. So I actually found a retired, in the course of our dealings, I had a builder who was a retired lumber grader, so he has been grading their lumber for them, and that's been working out well. Another thing we've done for the Amish is, we allow them to go to the service centers, because one of their problems was the fact that they have to ride all the way into town and try and catch me in my office to get an inspection scheduled. So now they can go to any one of the service centers and ask them to call and request an inspection, so they don't have to come all the way into town. So we do quite a bit for the Amish, and we encourage them to be here.
Yeah, and I will commend you, the gentleman I was speaking with commended you, and working with you, he said he's worked with you a number of times on a number of different structures, and he said you've always been very accommodating in everything that you've done. One thing I just wanted to bring forth, and make sure that these codes that we're putting in was not gonna affect them, or if it did affect them, how it was gonna affect, so we knew as a voting body what we were doing. Obviously, I feel like building codes are extremely important, especially after seeing in our Southern Standard, the front page, a balcony collapsing and hurting some individuals, so I think it's extremely important. One other, or actually, two other questions I've got is, is used materials, and then also multiple dwellings on, on one property. Can you speak to that, too, as well?
Multiple dwellings on one property would be handled by Tommy Lee in the zoning commission. As far as the building codes go, that, as long as, as long as the septic people will accept the use of the property, because of course, that takes up a lot more square footage than a house does, then they, there's, as far as actual homes, there is no limit. Mobile homes are limited to two, before they have to come before the board to get approved for a trailer. As far as the used materials, if it's, if it's rated and it's, it's in new condition or, I don't have an issue with it. I don't see any problems with that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And as far as the new codes, there's no, no changes for the Amish whatsoever, between the 2012 and the 2018.
What is the major difference between the new codes and the old codes that everybody else is gonna see as far as in electric and plumbing?
Electric plumbing is very little. There's some bracing requirements and stuff, as far as the structure goes, but there's very, very little. One of the big things was the energy code, but the state, what the state's doing, and they're on this, doing, in the process of adopting this as well, is we're adopting the 18 energy code, but we're using the codes out of the 2000, the schedule out of the 2009, which is what we're currently using, because the changes in the, to go to the 18 required six-inch exterior walls, and they estimated, the ones who wrote the code, was 75 cents a square foot cost increase, and increase in that energy, to that new energy code. Most of the contractors that I've talked to, it's more like a dollar and a half, somewhere around there, and we're, it really doesn't, I mean, we're, we do get cold weather, but it's not like you're in New England or something like that, so. And the state seems to feel the same way.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage.
Mr. Chairman, our codes will expire at the end of the year, and it's mandatory that we move forward. We can't be more than seven years behind, and there's some parts of this that the state has allowed us to opt out of. Is that true?
Correct.
Yes, and, and I've talked to contractors that work out of town, and some of the other towns have already adopted these, and they said there's very little difference, and it's something we'll, we'll eventually have to go to. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the five-year Skyward contract agreement, and I believe Commissioner Brown wanted to speak with that.
This contract is between the Warren County Schools and Skyward, and Skyward is a computer software management system that is all across the state of Tennessee, and basically what it does is it manages all the students. It keeps records of their grades, their attendance, truancy, problems, health records, everything about an individual student is, is maintained in the Skyward program. So, and this is, for the, for the past five years, they have been using this system and very satisfied with it. It's time to renew the contract, and the total bill of the contract was $34,201 per year, and I so move we accept it.
Well, a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Ruble. We'll need to do a voice vote on this.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Richard Grissom.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Lori Juckins.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owen.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble. Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion carries 23 to 0. Next is item number three, and it's the Troxell School Asset Manager Three-Year Agreement, and I believe Commissioner Brown wants to speak to that.
Once again, this is another contract, and this is a database inventory system, and it has a record of every single thing owned by the Warren County School System, and when it was purchased, how much it was purchased for, all the information about it. This system also will print out the inventory numbers and identification tags for it. We're asking here for a three-year agreement in order to get a better price for this. There are 11 schools that will be using this inventory system. It can also be used by the departments, as well as a nutrition program to manage their food items. And so, it's a one-time setup fee of the $1,995, a total of $8,000. So totaled together, it's running about $1,000 per school. I so move we accept this agreement.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Owens, and we'll do a voice vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next is item number four. It's a three-year service agreement between Warren County Schools and Ben Lohman, and I believe Commissioner Brown wants to speak to this also.
As Mr. Wiltshire said, this is a three-year agreement with Ben Lohman's telephone company, and we are required by the Fire Marshal's Office to maintain landlines for elevators and areas of safety at all of our schools. And in your packets, you saw that they have rates for each landline, monthly rates. So this is, by doing this for three years, the monthly rate is reduced down. So this is the contract to approve the monthly rates for landlines for elevators and areas of safety, and I so move we accept it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Glenn. We need to call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next item is 5A. This is DS-FY 19-20-1, and it is a budget transfer for the ESG project. Does anyone need any more information on that, or have you got it in front of you?
Move to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stout.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to give a little bit of information on this. Basically, what this is, is we're shifting money, or putting it in place to pay some of the interest and principal on the ESG project. And if you don't mind, I'd like Justin to speak a little more on that elaborately.
Yes. Yeah, it's exactly as Commissioner Ruble said. The contribution line is the payments from the general fund and the school system to cover interest and principal on both ESG projects. And the expense lines are to correct the interest lines, as well as set up the principal and interest payments for the two new debt issues since the beginning of the fiscal year. That would be the $2 million capital outlay note from USDA through County Fork, as well as the $2.5 million bond issued for the county ESG project.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we need to have a vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next item is budget transfer GF-FY 1920-2. I can speak to this. This is what I had mentioned earlier. This is where someone had left an estate to Animal Control and Adoption Center, and this is actually taking some of that money that was donated and moving it into budget lines, so that we can purchase a van for transport of adopted animals, and also to purchase new kennels. And I would entertain a motion to accept that. We have a motion from Commissioner Spartman, a second from Commissioner Juckins, and we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Savage.
I had a question. The, they had two trucks. The white truck, I think, was the oldest. Is it going to be retired?
We don't know yet. They've not been able to look at that yet. I know Commissioner, Executive Haley was going to have the truck looked at, and the last update, I think it's still sitting out here, so.
I'm not getting it.
It'd be for sale, probably. All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next is item 5D. This is Amendment GP-FY 1920-1, and this is to move money to establish a $100,000 project diabetes fund. Do I have a motion?
Has that moved?
We have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Commissioner Ruble. Have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, this is $100,000 pass-through money. There's going to be some exercise equipment installed at the middle school, and that's what this concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The rest of the items on this list are to appropriate funds from the school systems' fund balance. So, let's see, it's $135,000 is the other side of the capital outlay note payment that we had done, just approved for debt service. And the $132,000 line item is to take care of a little changing around of the computer leases that were approved in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Any other discussion? All right, let's call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next item is number six, Amendment AF-FY 1920-1, and it is amendment to the ambulance fund to move money from the fund balance to motor vehicles to purchase a new ambulance. Commissioner Lee, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Of course, as we talked about earlier, having little problems, and we need to get us a new ambulance. But I'm also proud of our EMS running pretty efficiently the last year or two, where we had the money in our budget without having to go back and borrow money from our savings account. So I'm really proud of our EMS, the way they're running. And I would really appreciate any support from the commissioner for this, and I so move.
I'll second it. We have a motion from Commissioner Lee, and a second from Commissioner England. Anybody want to speak to the motion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next item is number six, Amendment AF-FY 1920-1, and it is amendment to the ambulance fund to move money from the fund balance to motor vehicles to purchase a new ambulance. Commissioner Lee, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Of course, as we talked about earlier, having little problems, and we need to get us a new ambulance. But I'm also proud of our EMS running pretty efficiently the last year or two, where we had the money in our budget without having to go back and borrow money from our savings account. So I'm really proud of our EMS, the way they're running. And I would really appreciate any support from the commissioner for this, and I so move.
I'll second it. We have a motion from Commissioner Lee, and a second from Commissioner England. Anybody want to speak to the motion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Juckins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?[1420.58]
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to 0. Next item is item 7A, and that is the resolution to rescind the term limits on the industrial development board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to read this resolution, and the heading states, "Resolution Rescinding Limits of Consecutive Appointments to the Industrial Development Board of Warren County, Tennessee Previously Established by the Warren County Commission," pursuant to resolution number 24-2013. Whereas, members of the industrial development board of Warren County of Tennessee are elected by the Warren County Commission, and whereas, resolution number 24-2013 adopted, September 16, 2013, established a policy limiting the number of consecutive appointments to certain committees, commissions, and boards. And whereas, pursuant to said policy, persons appointed to the industrial development board could not be considered for reappointment for a time period equivalent to one term after serving two consecutive terms. And whereas, although new appointees shall continue to be considered whenever available, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Warren County that knowledgeable and experienced persons be not excluded from consideration to fill positions on the industrial development board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the 21st day of October 2019, thus followed. Section 1, that consecutive term limit restrictions established pursuant to resolution 24-2013 for the industrial development board of Warren County, Tennessee, shall be hereby rescinded. Section 2, that to the extent that this resolution conflicts with any prior resolutions passed by the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, this resolution shall supersede prior resolutions, including but not necessarily limited to resolution 4-2013 and resolution number 24-2013. And section 3, that the resolution shall take effect from and after its passage the welfare of the county requiring it, and I so move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ruble. We have a second by Commissioner Spartman. Anybody who wants to speak to the motion? Commissioner Hennessy.
This is directed to Mr. Ruble, because you are the sole author of this resolution. So basically, the purpose of this change is to get Jeff Golden back on the industrial board, because the board members expressed their desire to have him back on, and not to undermine his authority. Obviously, he's done a tremendous job. Is that the premise behind this?
That is part of this, but one thing is, the industrial development board, a member approached me and said that the problem that he had with it was consistency. The fact that the airport boards had dropped their term limits, that he just felt like that it would be in the best interest of the board if their term limits were dropped as well, and he felt like, from a consistency standpoint, that that would be in the best interest of the board. And I've also conferred with Mr. Charles Curtis about this, and he feels that his expressed consent, or his expressive opinion is, that we don't have any local term limits on any of our boards. It's kind of counterproductive that we're passing resolutions and putting requirements on future commissions.
If I might, so what you're saying is there is not any term limits on any other board that we have?
Mr. Hennessy, there are state requirements and state limits, but that's all that... And if Mr. Curtis would come to the podium, if it's okay with the chair, I'd like for him to explain where I'm coming from on that.
I'm not so sure I'm tracking, I'm following everything. The... What altered the resolution that you're repealing, what altered it, term limit? How many different positions?
Only the industrial development board, but after talking to you, the resolution had already been prepared, and I am prepared to research these other committees to drop those term limits as well in future meetings, but it kind of, it was brought to my attention after the fact.
I don't think that... It just depends on what it is, what kind of board it is. There's some, it don't matter. You just take the fair board. You'd think the fair board don't do much, but you ain't been involved in the fair board. They're probably one of the busiest boards you got. It just depends on what the board's doing. You know, some things, it may not hurt. It may be good to get new blood on things. But when you got a board that's working and working well, but one of the most important boards you've got's industrial development board. If you don't have a good board in place, you don't have a prayer recruiting new industry. You know, I represented this county in the legislature for 10 terms, and I was involved on several entities coming into the county, just going to meetings, and a lot of times we didn't even know who we were meeting with. And the name would be withheld from us. But that industrial development board, and your county executive, and your city mayor, they're the face of Warren County when you're dealing with an industrial prospect. And you want the very best people you can get on there. And if you don't have the very best people on there now, you better be getting them, because that's what you need. But I'm not saying term limits are bad as a whole. I never have felt that. But on the industrial development board, if you've got an abundance of people, that you've got to whirr with all to go out here and recruit people and cut a deal, then maybe it's another reason to have a term limit in it. But if you don't, then maybe you need to give it another thought, just as you're doing tonight. But the comment was made earlier, that I made the comment that I felt they needed to get the opinions of the industrial development board, that ain't the only thing I said. I think you also need to get the opinion of your county executive. He has to work with whoever's on this board, and these board members have to work with whoever's on that board. So both of these groups are very, very important. If I was sitting where you're at, I would want to know what Mr. Haley thought, and I'd want to know what the members of that industrial development board thought. I would take all that into consideration, because when it comes to negotiating with a prospect, those are the folks that's going to be doing it. It's going to behoove you to make sure that they got people on there that'll work together, because if there's any kind of rift, those people will sense that, and they'll just move on to another community. There's got to be unity when you're dealing with an industrial prospect, and we're talking about the future of this county. We're talking about, we've got children in school. Carleen leads that education committee. We've got children, schools are going to need jobs, once they finish up with their college degree, or whatever they do. And the whole future's tied to what you're making a decision on tonight. But I would get some input from those other folks, as I told you when we had a phone conversation. But if you've got an abundance of folks that can serve on that committee, I wouldn't worry about term limits. If you don't, I'd be real careful.
Mr. Chairman. Obviously, this got brought up in our policy personnel meeting that we had, and at that time, I actually voiced my opinion that term limits was a good thing. I do believe term limits are a good thing. I think that we all should have term limits, maybe even in this commission. But as it was put, I think Mr. Curtis, he put it to me in perspective that it sort of related to me. Here, I thought this industrial development board may be compensated by some way, some form or fashion, but the truth of it is, is they attend meetings once a month, and they get zero compensation. I can relate to that, as he said in the fair board deal. You know, I've been serving on that fair board since 2000, and so I've been in it for 19 years, and no, I don't want to be kicked off my fair board. It's a volunteer deal, just as basically this right here is. And so with that being taken into consideration, and then also taken into consideration what Mr. Don Alexander, I reached out to him today as well, and what he told me is, you know, if we've got somebody good in place that knows it, knows it well, he said, "The last person I want to see leave this is Mr. Golden." So with that being said, I'm going to have to support this and rescind these restrictions, and I encourage everybody to do the same.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. Mr. Curtis, you said we should check with the county executive, how he feels about this? Has anyone checked with him? Do we know? Do we know his feelings on this? Can you speak to that, Carleen?
Well, he, his recommendations are in our packet, and he has two recommendations that he wants to be confirmed by the board this evening. So when we get to 7B, I believe it is, and we start to vote on who our appointments will be, we'll need to make sure that, I think, that we consider the two people that he has interviewed and felt qualified and is ready to present as his candidates.
Go ahead, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But my question is, how does he feel about the term limits? Does anyone know that?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Haley interviewed applicants last week, and he is respectfully against changing the term limits.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner England.
I had an opportunity to speak with one of the board members, and I just flat asked him. I said, you know, "Here's the two that we've been asked to vote for, and what's your opinion?" He said, "There's some great things happening in the industrial development board." I can't go into details, some of yous know them, but there's great things going on, and like Mr. Golden, as an example. He is looking for the right words here, but they have got some things going on, and I hate to kind of jerk the seat out from under him. That may be the wrong term, but you see what I'm saying? And let him, let's get through this that we're working on. We're working on some things that are big for Warren County, and I'm going to support Mr. Golden, too, if we...
We need to remain focused on the fact that what we're talking about right now, we've got a motion and a second for this resolution to eliminate the term limits on We're not voting on those positions right now. We're voting on whether or not to have this resolution, to pass this resolution. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
I call for the question.
All right. Question's been called. All right, we'll do a voice vote first. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, let's do a voice vote. Yes, Commissioner Brown.
Restate what we're voting on, please.
We're voting on the elimination, this resolution that eliminates the term limits on the industrial development board. Does everybody understand that? Okay.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
No.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
No.
Steve Glenn.
No.
Richard Grissom.
No.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
No.
Lori Jenkins.
No.
Ron Lee.
No.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
No.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
No.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman.
Yes.
Joseph Stotts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote?
Motion passes 14 yes, no, no. All right, next item is 7B. This is to confirm industrial development board appointment recommendations, and as was mentioned previously, you have Executive Haley's recommendations in front of you, and I will open the floor up for nominations at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stotts.
I would like to nominate Mr. Mike Elam.
We have a motion to nominate Mike Elam.
I'd like to second that. Mr. Chairman.
We have a second from Commissioner Martin.
Do we have to renominate? Do we have to nominate like Jenny Nefrata? Okay, I'd like to nominate Jenny Nefrata.
We have a motion from Commissioner Evans. We have a second from Commissioner Ross to nominate Jenny Nefrata.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jeff Golden.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble to nominate Jeff Golden. We have a second from Commissioner Spartman. Commissioner Brown.
I'd like to nominate Carrie Huckabee.
We have a motion to nominate Carrie Huckabee. We have a second from Commissioner Ross. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that nominations cease.
We have a motion on that in a second. Everybody in favor of that? Say aye. Any opposed? Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Out of respect of the candidates, candidates that are present tonight for this very important board, would it not be to our benefit to call these candidates up and have them declare and see in their position? I call Mr. Elam up to the podium, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you.
I gave my resume a few months ago. I've got 38 years of service with the Department of Agriculture, working in the area of loans and grants to cities and towns and communities for all of the things that industrial park does. Those 40 years, I think, speak for themselves. I'll be honest, I'm open and above board. I want to help poor people. I started to work with Farmers' Administration in 1968 for that purpose.
Mr. Elam, could I ask you a question, please? Was your family involved in the sale of property for the industrial board?
That was property that belonged to my uncle, so I guess I was aware, but other than that, I was not involved.
Do you now possess property that's adjacent to that property? Are you not a landowner there?
I am a landowner, but I don't own property there.
Okay.
It's within about three miles.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Let me show you, I want to say, I appreciate you and your family. Your wife taught me in school, and a very upstanding family. Obviously, they're from our district, and I want to give you a recommendation, you know, to, and I'll be supporting you in this. One question that I do have for you is your intent or your reasoning for being on the board. You know, obviously, the question has been brought about the Elam property, and you wanting to try to keep the industrial development board from developing this land, and I just want you to speak to that, and your intentions of being, why you want to be on this board.
Well, the first question, I certainly have no reason not to develop the property. I think it's a good, a good choice. It may not be the best choice for the county, but it is a good choice. And certainly, it's not, not anything wrong with developing, and I have no, no reason not to see it developed. And as far as being on the board, like I said, I think we need more employment, we need better employment, and that's why I'm applying for the job. Try to do that. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Elam. All right, we will welcome the next candidate to the podium, Jeannie.
Hi, I was elected to fill in for the past six months for a member that retired, and I have enjoyed serving on the industrial development board for the past six months. I have learned a lot. I've gone to some extra training with Upper Cumberland Development, when they came here and did a workshop one morning, and learned a lot about the grants that the state has, and I've done some research on my own for federal grants that we should be taking advantage of, that we should be applying for. And I have had to miss a couple of meetings. I had type A flu one time, and then I have custody of a niece that lives with me, and she had a seizure at school. And I apologize for not being able to be at those, because of those emergencies, but I have tried to make up for it by doing extra research and touring the sites in the county. I think that there's a lot more that the industrial development board can be doing. It's an exciting time for this county, and we have created, I just created a new LLC for a company that's coming in, that will be, in the next couple of years, providing, hopefully, up to 50 new jobs in manufacturing. So we get to see kind of what's coming, what we need to do as a county to keep the students here that are going through this Mottlo program, so that they can stay working in this county, and we can increase our tax basis, and I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carrie Huckabee.
Good evening, everyone. The reason I applied for the IDB position was because I thought there was one. So I've been a Warren County native my whole life, worked here many years. I served on the Chamber of Commerce board. I've been involved in leadership at McMinnville several years. So, you know, I love Warren County and care a lot about the future. My experience has been in marketing, and I am certainly not interested in taking a seat out from under Mr. Golden, because he brings much experience to the county. He's very well-respected and very intelligent, so I know he's very valuable to the committee or to the board. But I also think that there's a place for marketing at the table. I am a firm believer in marketing and things like technology. First impressions mean a lot, websites, advertising, PR. Those are things that bring people to the county as well. Those are the first impressions. So I applied because, you know, I do believe that marketing has a place on every board, because if you don't have that, you know, a lot of times you can't get them, to get their foot in the door. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
I'm just curious, we have the three candidates here that are vying for this position on the IDB board, and obviously, Mr. Golden's not here. Do we know that Mr. Golden wants to serve back on the IDB board? Has he requested to serve back on the IDB board? Has he contacted somebody personally to say, "I want you to nominate me tonight on the IDB board"?
Commissioner Taylor.
Mr. Hennessy, Mr. Hennessy, I spoke with Mr. Golden, it's been two weeks ago, maybe three, and he said he would love to serve and would love to continue serving if we would have him.
Any other questions? Commissioner Brown.
I'd like to, can I say a few things about Mrs. Huckabee?
Yes.
Since I know her personally, and I've worked with her probably 30 years here in our community. She has just been a backbone person in Ben Lohman, and has worked in many counties, and been the face of that company, and promoted technology, the internet, digital, brought just the whole transformation of the internet opportunities here in Warren County. And I know that Ben Lohman has representatives at the IDB board monthly meetings, just to advise them in the technological needs of, that an industry would have if they moved here into our community. I just want to say, I know that she would do an excellent job, and her recommendation by Mr. Haley, I certainly endorse that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Glenn.
Miss Huckabee, she's my neighbor, and she does a good job, she's a good community person, she does good for Ben Lohman, and I think my vote's for her, so I appreciate it.
Any other discussion before we vote?
Well, Jeannie, she's fairly new. I believe we ought to try to keep her on there. We're appointing two, right?
Right.
Hey, let her finish out her term, you know? Thank you.
All right, we're ready to vote, and you only have two votes. So when we get ready to go through this, just remember that, you have two votes. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we vote in the way they were nominated. All right, we have a motion to vote in the way of the nominations.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stotts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Okay, the first one will be Mike Elam. Second will be Jenny Nefrata. Third is Jeff Golden, and fourth is Carrie Huckabee. Is everybody ready? This vote will be for Mike Elam. Michael Bell.
Pass.
Carl D. Bolden.
Pass.
Carleen Brown.
Pass.
David Dunlap.
Pass.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Pass.
Steve Glenn.
Pass.
Richard Grissom.
Pass.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Pass.
Lori Jenkins.
Pass.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Pass.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Pass.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Sav... Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? All right. This vote will be for Jenny Nafroda. Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
Pass.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Pass.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? This vote will be for Mr. Jeff Golden. Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Pass.
Steve Glenn?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Pass.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? The last one will be Carrie Huckabee. Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Cole Taylor?
Pass.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
Pass.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Pass.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Jenny Nafroda and Carrie Huckabee are the new members of IDB. I'm sorry, Mr. Curtis. If you can come up to the front. If we've done something wrong, we want to know it.
I don't want you to do anything wrong. If we elect anybody, it's going to take thirteen votes. Only one of them got thirteen votes, if I count it right.
You're right. You're right. One of them did.
You can only appoint one right now. Because the only way you can elect somebody is a majority of this body.
Right.
You can't almost have the majority. You got to have it. You had one of them do it, so you got to turn around. It's up to y'all how you do it, but you got to vote again on the three to the left.
Okay. All right. Jenny Nafroda got thirteen, so we'll have to vote on the other three.
Mr. Chairman, were we...two votes per person, right?
No.
Just to be one.
You want us to get one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Curtis a question?
Yes.
When we've had elections before, this is how we've always done it, but I know it's obviously wrong, as you're saying.
Exactly. They get somebody shot lifted at Walmart. It ain't going to be an excuse. I did it last week. You just got caught this week. But no, all honesty.
Oh, I know. I just...
You've just been doing it wrong.
I just...as legislation and our parliamentary chairman over there, we want to get this right. So when we...
Anything you do has to be done by the majority of your membership. If only thirteen of you show up, it's going to take all thirteen of you to do anything. There's one...
When we elect internal committees here, do we have...does each one of those have to have thirteen votes? That's different.
I don't think that would matter, personally. I don't think that matters. But this matters.
Okay. Thank you.
What you're doing internally is not important, but what you're doing that's dealing with the state, for you to take any action, it takes a majority of your membership. Now, on your committees, it don't. You're doing the rules now. If you say you got a ten-member committee and it just takes five to have a forum, and it only takes three to pass something, you can do that on a committee. But on this body, it takes all...it takes the majority of the whole group.
Charles, we've even elected state senators by doing this, and we never had the thirteen votes.
I guess the senator's glad nobody checked on the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. All right. You ready?
Yeah.
All right. Is everybody ready? You get one vote, and we've got three candidates. All right.
Who's the first one going down like Mike, Jeff, and Ms. Carrie?
All right. First one is Mr. Mike Ehlum.
Mike Ehlum.
Pass.
Carl D. Bolden?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Randy England?
Pass.
Deborah Evans?
Pass.
Steve Glenn?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Pass.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
Mr. Chairman, could you clarify on this one more time? I apologize.
We're voting for Mike Ehlum.
I'm aware of that, but as far as we're voting, we have three candidates left.
We have three candidates.
We're now only allowing one vote across three candidates.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Cole Taylor?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Anyone want to change their vote? All right. This vote will be for Mr. Jeff Golden. Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
I'm out of votes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Pass.
Steve Glenn?
Pass.
Deborah Evans?
Pass.
Randy England?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote? Third vote will be for Ms. Carrie Huckabee. Michael Bell?
Pass.
Carl D. Bolden?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Pass.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Pass.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Pass.
Joseph Stotts?
Out of votes.
Philip Stout?
Pass.
Cole Taylor?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Anyone want to change their vote?
All right, Charles, I'm going to have to ask you, can we go to the top two vote-getters? Okay. Because we didn't have thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we narrow it down to the top two vote-getters.
Thank you. Everybody in favor of that? The same aye? Aye.
What were the numbers? Um, Mike Ehlum had five yes, Jeff Golden had ten yes, and Carrie Huckabee had ten yes.
Eight. Yes, eight. Ten and eight.
I had eight.
That's right. Ten and eight.
I made it ten.
All right. We're going to vote on the two with the highest number, which were Jeff Golden and Carrie Huckabee. Is that correct? You have one vote.
Be Jeff Golden and then Carrie Huckabee.
Jeff Golden will be first and Carrie Huckabee. One vote each. Yeah.
Excuse me. This vote will be for Mr. Jeff Golden. Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
David Dunlap?
Pass.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Pass.
Steve Glenn?
Pass.
Richard Grissom?
Pass.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Pass.
Lori Jenkins?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Her pass.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Pass.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
We're going to have to start over. We got twelve.
She got eleven. I mean, he got eleven, but the other one's going...it works out. Still going to have thirteen. The other one ain't going to have thirteen, is it?
Nobody wants to change their vote, then we'll have to vote again because we won't have thirteen.
Is there any reason we can't wait till the next meeting to address this?
Mr. Chairman?
We can.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We need to elect someone tonight. I will hereby change my vote.
That makes it twelve to eleven.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Curtis, you've got something to say?
Now, listen, I don't know, I guess I had the intuition that this might happen. What the code actually says, you're actually electing members of this Industrial Development Board. Our Constitution, I actually talked to the county attorney about this today too, but the Constitution says if someone's in elected office and their term expires, they, they serve until somebody's elected and qualified to take their place. So if you don't fill this position tonight and let somebody die, the Industrial Development Board's gonna be complete. If it takes you a month, or two months, or three months to come to an agreement on who you're gonna put on that board, the board's not gonna be shorthanded. But y'all can vote all night if you want to, but I don't think you're gonna get anywhere.
No, I would entertain a motion to table it till the next minute, meeting as unfinished business.
I'll make that motion.
Well, a motion by Commissioner Prater, a second by Commissioner Bolden. I'll speak, Commissioner Hennessy.
Mr. Chairman, if I would, so let me get this straight, we're voting on two individuals, but Jenny has already been secured her presentation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, we have a motion to table this until the next minute, meeting as unfinished business, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, the next item is 8A, and that is the confirmation of the sanitation department director and animal control and adoption director, and I will have to take my seat as a commissioner for this.
Ladies and gentlemen, TCA code requires that we confirm the appointments of the sanitation director as well as the animal control director, and Commissioner Wiltshire, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, Chairman Ruble, I would like to make that, put that in a form of a motion. This was done in era, and we're just basically, we know that both those directors are doing a great job, and I don't see any of us wanting to change them, and I would like to make a motion that we confirm them as a commission and spread that on the minutes.
Would that be separately, individually?
Uh, yes, we can do animal control and adoption center first, Ms. Sherri Bradley, I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second. That's a second by Tyrone Spartman. Would anyone like to speak to that motion?
Is this a voice vote, or just, or is it a roll call?
Voice. Voice, voice vote will suffice unless we, unless there's opposition. No, no other discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make a motion that we, as a commission, confirm the sanitation department director, Josh Roberts.
I have a motion, that's a second from Commissioner England. Anyone like to speak to the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll yield back to the chair.
All right, the next item is actually item 8B, which is the confirmation of interim appointment of Brad Walker as the county archivist. I have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second by Commissioner Hilton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is item number nine, which is approvable, approval of Constable Bond for Mark Quirton. I have a motion from Commissioner England, a second from Commissioner Hilton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We'd like to have a roll call vote.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Richard Grissom?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Lori Jenkins?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 23 yes.
Motion passes 23 to zero. Uh, next item is item 10, approval of notaries. A motion from Commissioner Bowe, a second from Commissioner Hilton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next item is number 11, resolution for dedication of Tommy D. Young Bridge. Commissioner Prater?
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution requesting that the bridge crossing Miller Branch on US Highway 70, State Route 1, be named in honor in the memory of Thomas D. Young. I so move.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Prater, a second by Commissioner Stotts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We actually have no special presentation tonight. I know some of you probably want to stay a little bit longer, but we don't have a special presentation. But I do have some announcements, first I want to call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Chairman Wiltshire. I'd just like to take the opportunity to express my gratitude to this assembled body here this evening. I reached out to several of you, and Ms. Brown reached out to several of you, because I was in the position to amend the docket under new business, to do a restructure of the Budget and Finance Committee. And the only reason that moved me to do that, there was two reasons primarily. One was the, the citizens of this county reached out to me and asked me why two of the most qualified individuals that have ever sat on that committee by the name of Daniel Owens and Mr. Richard Grissom were not placed back on that committee. And as you all know, I had serious issue with that. You have a gentleman that has a major in accounting, he runs a multimillion-dollar business, in the same breath you have an individual that has an accounting major and business major, finance major, and is president of a bank. Mr. Wiltshire, I just would ask you, at your selection of these critical, and as we all know, the budget and finance is probably the most important, not taking anything away from any other committee, but out of respect to you, and due diligence, and to proceed forward, in support, I did not do that. But whenever this time comes again, and this opportunity, it is our obligation to our citizens to make sure that we have the very best people on each and every one of these committees. One other thing, quickly. There was an overwhelming support by each and every one of you that I spoke to, and the common denominator was, thank you, Commissioner Hennessy, for reaching out and communicating with me and telling me before the meeting what you were going to propose. Everybody that I spoke to said that. That being said, if there is a motion, a resolution, something that you're adamant about, it's as important to me as it is to you. I respect your decision to do the things that you do. In turn, I expect you to respect my decision, and it's what I'm led to do. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Two more things. Real quick, Carl D. Bolden gave me this, Deborah Wiltshire of Wiltshire-Sawmill is looking, is looking for anyone that knows of any old cemeteries that needs cleaning or cleaning up. I have her number here, it is something they do to better the community, so I have their number here also. And then Executive Haley had a proclamation to read, and it is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas 1 in 3 Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court calls, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas through community, community programs such as Families in Crisis, Domestic Violence Shelter and Program, we can work together to break the cycle of domestic violence, and whereas our city is not immune to the consequences of domestic violence, with us ranking number 10 in the state for violence calls alone. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence, and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims, and furthermore, our local Families in Crisis Center provided services for 524 survivors of violence, provided shelter for 102 victims, and answered crisis calls from over 2,900 persons needing help. Now therefore, I, Jimmy Haley, Warren County Executive, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge the citizens of McMinnville to work together to eliminate domestic violence for our community. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affix this seal on October 1st, 2019, County Executive Jimmy Haley. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
All right, Commissioner Savage?
I would like to thank Commissioner Wiltshire, and T. Dot, and Senator Bowlen, and others for the new traffic lights, caution and red lights that we have on, at the intersection of 288 and 136 on Highway 70. They're red on one side and yellow on the other, and I tell you, you just have to be blind not to be able to see them, they're so bright. And it took a long time, and we'll never know how much good it's done, because the only numbers we'll ever have is the ones that have been hurt and the ones that have been killed. But we'll never know how many lives it saves. Also, the bridge on Highway 288, they're almost finished with laying the steel and the decking, and they will start pouring the concrete this month, and the completion date is November 30th, but according to the weather, and it could be the end of the year. And we'll be so glad when it's done, but, you know, it's took a long time, but we're gonna go from a bridge that was 18 feet from white line to white line to 35 feet.
Wow.
So, about 35 feet and change. So, it's gonna be, well, that was 18 feet from curb to curb, 16 from white line to white line. We're gonna, we're gonna think we're crossing the Westwood Bridge out there in the county, but thank y'all for your patience.
Thank you. With that, I believe I had a motion to adjourn. Nope, Commissioner Brown. Hey, don't get up, Andy.
I, I just wanted to make sure those that are new on the commission, you received an invitation to the Exchange Club's One Nation Under God Prayer Breakfast. It's a wonderful breakfast, you will, you will receive a lot of, of self-fulfillment if you, and it's not just, not the food. The people and the prayer and the message that usually comes out of this breakfast is really worth it, so I hope you can, can attend, and everybody that says on here to...
RSVP.
RSVP as soon as possible, so they can make plans, so try really hard to attend it, you will enjoy it.
Commissioner Taylor?
It won't take just a second, I know everybody's ready to go, I'm me too. I'd just like to say to the full commission, I have the utmost respect for each and every one of you sitting here tonight. And here lately, it's been a very tough position for all of us to sit in, especially for me personally. Five years ago, I got beat by one vote, and it killed me, but I was so excited to win this time and get to be up here, but here lately, it's been a struggle. And, uh, so I'm gonna say this, up here voting, nothing's ever personal, it's not for me, I can say that, whether it's voted for me or against me, I'm never personal, I don't take it personal by no means. And, um, like I said, I have respect for all of you, and sometimes the way we vote don't always go the way you may be in favor of, but as a full commission, I feel like we owe it to the people of the county, even if it ain't your way, get behind that person, let's push forward. I really believe that with all my heart. I mean, I think, I think we're a good group of people here, there's no doubt in my mind, so I feel that even though you may not support certain things that other people do, let's get behind it, let's put our opinions together, and let's work together, we owe it to the people of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed?